Good morning, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the Facilities Committee meeting. Today is January twenty-second and the time is ten oh one A M. We have all committee members present and I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So move to approve the curriculum meeting. Second.
All in favor? Four oh, thank you. I need a motion to approve the meeting minutes from November twentieth.
So move.
And I will second since they weren't on the committee then.
And you second it?
Yeah, I guess I can second it. Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you, four oh. Um, okay, we have an action item. Next stop, Teach U C P S residency pathway. Am I kicking off to you, Ms. Rimmer?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Good morning. Welcome, Mr. Tucker. I am welcome to the Curriculum Committee and our returning board members. I am here on behalf of Dr. Radars today to take support in the work of of our academics and H R team. So I'm going to hand it off to Dr. Craftson, our Director of Hiring and Talent Acquisition, to share a little bit about some additional pathways through Teach U C P S. So I'm going to share my screen and Dr. Craftson, go ahead and take it away.
All right. Well, thank you for the warm welcome and good morning to each of you. I am here to talk about Next Stop Teach U C P S and the brand-new residency pathway in partnership with U N C Charlotte. And so this pathway, the goal is to help us fill some of our critical need positions. Our current adult pathways right now only allow for certification for elementary education. And while that pathway and that program is going strong and we are meeting our goals there, we know that we need to address some other critical need areas. And Wingate University currently does not offer other licensure areas for our adults. So we have had to reach out to another university partner. And U N C Charlotte is that partner and they do have those programs. So I will be providing a brief overview of the residency pathway details and this new partnership. In terms of eligible candidates, we are offering this pathway for our current classified instructional employees. And some examples of those employees would be our tutors or our instructional assistants, as well as we are including in our candidate pool former Union County Public Schools graduates, which we're very excited about. In terms of requirements and details, these are candidates who would need to already have obtained a bachelor's degree from an accredited college or university. So this is something they would have pursued on their own and already have obtained. This pathway is designed to allow these candidates to obtain a teaching certification only. So they would be enrolling at U N C Charlotte for the specific licensure areas that we have designated as critical need. It's exceptional children's, which is special education, C T E, which is career and technical education, and then middle and high school math and science. There is also an option through this pathway for elementary education, but they would be enrolling at South Piedmont Community College. South Piedmont has just implemented this residency option. It's called an educator preparation program. We refer to it as an E P P. So they have just started an E P P there. All the candidates will become a certified classroom teacher within one to two years of starting the program. That's all the time that it takes. The great news for our employees or our graduates is they can actually obtain a teaching position right away when they start the program, or they have the option of waiting until they complete it. The nice thing about giving candidates options is it really helps meet them where they're at and design a customizable plan for their career. And then for all the employees, because they recognize these are full-time working adults, the program is designed as fully online and all the programs are sixteen to twenty-one hours, which is within that window of the one to two years. All right. And in terms of cost and commitment, it's the same as the other adult pathways. There's zero cost for tuition if the candidate is approved to be a part of the Next Stop Teach U C P S program. As I mentioned earlier, they would have to incur the cost for the bachelor's degree. This pathway starts just at the the E P P, the Educator Preparation Teaching Certification Program process. And in terms of employee commitment, they will have to follow again the same as the other adults, which is they will be a teacher with us upon completion of the program for a minimum of three years in a Title One school or a minimum of four years in other schools. And then finally, we're very excited about the variety of strategies that we've implemented to promote this new pathway. Ms. Stalbert has partnered with us to develop an excellent press release that just went public this month. We are currently also partnering with a few local news channels. They will be conducting interviews with several of our Next Stop Teach U C P S current employees who are enrolled in the program to again just provide some information about how this program is going. And then we are very excited about our partnership with U N C Charlotte. Ms. Rimmer, if you would not mind clicking on the Talent Pathways website. We recently had a meeting with their team and they're going to be adding us as a talent pathway partner. Yes, if you scroll all the way to the bottom, you will see currently they are highlighting Truist and Amazon and they're going to be adding Union County Public Schools as an additional talent pathway partner. Ms. Rimmer, if you will click on one of the two, it doesn't matter, Truist or Amazon. So we are working with them. They're going to develop a landing page for Union County Public Schools for Next Stop Teach U C P S and the residency pathway. So we will have U N C C students or just other interested candidates who can go directly to this website and find out about all things Next Stop Teach U C P S and our district. We will be highlighting district highlights. We will be highlighting that we are the employer of choice. And so this is another great high-level opportunity for us to showcase Union County Public Schools and this pathway. And then in terms of promotion with our employees, you'll see we do have a number of different strategies. We have been sharing a leadership memo with principals and school employees. Of course, we send out flyers digitally and through social media. We have partnered with communications and the employee newsletter, targeted emails to our instructional employees. And finally, we're seeing great success with roadshows. Dr. Plu and I have been visiting our middle schools to meet in person with our math tutors and make sure they're aware of this great opportunity and hope that they choose to pursue this pathway. U N C Charlotte has also partnered with us to send targeted communications out to their students who may also be U C P S graduates and might be interested in this pathway. Additionally, I recently held a virtual interest meeting about this pathway and just the entire Next Stop Teach U C P S program. And we had over fifty registered attendees. And the actual number that joined for the entire session was thirty-eight, which is about double what we typically see in a virtual interest meeting. So that's very exciting for us to see how the word is getting out about this program. And finally, a little bit about the application. We will be going live on February first and the application will be open through May first. And in terms of the selection process, now that the word is getting out and the program and different pathways are becoming highly competitive, we really have an opportunity to, you know, make sure we are being very careful when we are selecting our candidates. We want to make sure we are putting the highest quality candidates in front of our students in Union County Public Schools. So our application will involve a letter of recommendation from the employee's principal or current supervisor if they are a U C P S graduate. We will also be requiring several essay responses. And we are adding in an interview process to make sure that we have a team that meets with each employee or U C P S graduate to make sure they would be the right fit for this program and to become a future teacher with us. And I believe that is all we have for now. Any questions I can clarify?
Anyone have questions?
Great presentation, Ms. Crafts. Great. Couple of couple of pieces. How did the January session go, the interest session? How did that go? You you shared that it was more than you anticipated, but how did it go? What was the flow of it?
Very good question. So I presented information about the different pathways and the different options. One piece of information that I learned is with there being multiple pathways and multiple options, that can be a little bit overwhelming to some candidates. So the way we have designed the application is it's going to be one general application for all pathways. And as an H R team, we will evaluate the candidate's transcript and work with the institutions to let the candidate know which pathway applies to them. And that takes some of that burden off of being the expert for the candidate. I will say the very exciting piece of information is we have many candidates who are very interested and excited to become teachers with us. And that was very encouraging. They asked excellent questions and we were able to send a very targeted follow-up communication to answer those questions and make sure we provide one-on-one meetings with them to make sure we answer all those questions with fidelity. But the interest is there. I'm confident that we will get more than enough candidates into this pipeline. And, you know, we really know how to support them moving forward in terms of making sure they fully understand each of the pathways.
How excited is U N C Charlotte to walk with us in this?
Extremely excited. This is truly a win-win because what research is showing us is that the trend is that these institutions are seeing less and less students enroll in their programs. And so they want more students to enroll. They want to support us through the process. We do partner with them and Ms. Rimmer is fully aware of this. We partner with them on other initiatives. They partner with us on supporting many of our beginning teachers through mentorship and coaching. And so they are constantly looking for new ways to partner with us and support us through our teacher, you know, certification process. We have many student teachers that come out of U N C Charlotte. So this was a natural next step in partnership with them.
And finally, this is a program that's near and dear to my heart. Our daughter, a former, a U C P S graduate, class of twenty-ten from Monroe High School. I remember the day Dr. Breedlove, when she said that she switched her major from from being from medical to education, Dr. Breedlove hired her on the spot. And but she had to do one of these programs because her major at that time, you know, was biology and all the medical stuff. So I know this program works and I'm excited about it. And I pray that folks, our U C P S, folks will take advantage of it because it's going to bring great dividends for the district. Thank you, Madam Chair, for this opportunity to ask questions.
I have I have a couple of questions. How are we funding this? Like, where's the money coming from?
Great question. Yep. So we have in our H R, our human resources budget, we have a line item for these Next Up U C P S scholarships. And so we are working within the current funding allotment, so it's not costing us any additional monies. As I mentioned, our current adult pathways for elementary education, we currently have a robust talent pipeline of twenty-five employees who can fill elementary vacancies over the next couple of years. So we can decrease the number that go towards elementary education and increase the number that go to these critical need positions.
So do we do have a certain number, a cap, as far as how many we can actually do?
Absolutely.
Okay. On the Title One, where they would teach them for three years, the middle and high, though, they're not technically Title One? So would that still, like, it's that category, basically?
Yes. So we would be looking at our our high priority schools in that situation. And really, I know when this was initially, you know, rolled out, it was elementary education only. So now that we're adding, but those would be the the schools we'd be referring to.
Do we do any talks with our substitute teachers?
Yes. And actually, the our E S S employees were invited to attend the information session and many of them did. And the stipulation for them is they just need to become a U C P S instructional classified employee first with us and then we absolutely would offer them that opportunity as well.
Okay. And then the application period ends May first?
Yes.
If we don't get the number we want applying, would we extend that or?
We certainly would look at that and, you know, continue promoting. I anticipate that we will have the number that we need, but we certainly would be flexible on that. The good news is we started early enough to make sure they would, the candidates would have plenty of time to apply by the deadline. So the U N C C application deadline is August ninth. So that does give us plenty of time to do the interviews and the the follow-up approvals.
Thank you. Thank you so much. This is fantastic. I mean, of course, we always want to make it as affordable as possible to get teachers. So this is great. Any other questions?
Yes, ma'am. Is it Ms. Craftson or Dr. Craftson?
It is doctor.
Okay, all right, Dr. Craftson. Yes, ma'am. You worked hard for that. So let me give you your respect. All right.
Thank you.
All right. So you said that the areas of focus, C E T, E C, mid-middle and high school math and?
Science.
Science, okay. What is the starting pay for these teachers once they transition through the program?
Right. So it would be that starting, there's a state salary schedule and the state's starting state salary is forty-one thousand dollars. And then, of course, we have the additional local supplement. Where it gets a little tricky is certain candidates may be coming in before they've completed the program, before they have a license. And so there's some compensation implications there. But, you know, essentially, they're coming in at starting teacher pay would be kind of the safest explanation.
You mentioned about targeting students who are currently at U N C C who are U C P S graduates, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So one of my concerns have have always been, even with the program at Wingate University, trying to identify students to go into education. Because there are some students who go into other pathways who really desire to go into education, but due to affordable housing and living expenses, they feel as though, well, I'll be struggling doing something that I love. Is there any type of, are there any conversations that have been had about when these students do graduate from college and we want them to work in U C P S in our Title One schools to maybe partner with an apartment complex or build our own apartment complex or something so that these students in their first few years of teaching can focus on perfecting their craft and not have to worry so much about how am I going to pay my utilities and things of that nature?
Very good input. And yes, Dr. Plu and I have been working actively on making some connections with some of our local apartment complexes. And I think our first goal would be to see what partnerships we could make with some of these local housing, you know, options, looking at, you know, reduced rates or are there any incentives that we can, starting there? We've also made some connections with other school systems who are doing some innovative things with that. We do recognize that that is a barrier. And it's something that we have set as a goal that we're going to actively be working on and we'll certainly keep you all posted on any updates that might come from those conversations.
On the event that you all had on the sixteenth, about how many participants did you all have? And how diverse was it?
Sure, very diverse. From all different sides of the county, we had employees in all different roles. I will say, one very exciting thing, being part of this program, we've had employees who have been bus drivers, school nutrition employees who have transitioned into a different role in U C P S in order to pursue the program, which is great. So it was definitely a diverse group. We did have thirty-eight attend. And I would say out of those thirty-eight, probably about a third to a half were interested in some of these harder-to-fill positions. So again, I see a lot of hope and just I have a positive outlook on that we will be able to fill these positions in the program.
I don't have any more questions. I think it's a phenomenal program. Education is why we are all here. And so any way that I can support to identify students and individuals in District One, please let me know. I'm willing to help.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions?
Just a quick comment, Ms. May, just to give a shout out to our H R team and our academics team for really coming together and to think innovatively. You know, when we started Teach U C P S years ago, the primary focus were our high school students who were trying to to get to become teachers. That still is a primary focus and Wingate University continues to be our main partner in that. But we've challenged our H R and academics team to kind of think out of the box. And this program continues to get statewide recognition for how innovative it is and how we've been able to not only focus on our current students, but also now graduates and current employees. So I just want to say a big, a big thank you to our team for thinking innovatively and for continuously trying to figure out how to get better. And as we're aware, our vacancy rates are at an all-time low since the coming out of the pandemic. We're doing very well in elementary, but these middle school and high school positions are still hard to fill. So I just want to say thank you for the great work and let's keep it going.
Houlihan. You you brought up something, I'm sorry, not to prolong the meeting, but you brought up something in reference to identifying students to go into education. And that is what Wingate University, that program that they have. Have you all put out maybe a county-wide survey to our students? Would you like, is education a career pathway that you're interested in, yes or no? If not, why not? And that why not may open up more conversations to provide more opportunities and awareness on why students may not want to go into education. So have have you all done anything along those lines?
Yeah, I'm going to ask Mr. Davis to comment on that in terms of interest. What I will say is that I'm not sure about the second part of your question in terms of the why not. And that might be something we need to take a stronger look at. But Brian, if you can comment on the system we have in place to collect feedback from students on that.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Houlihan and Mr. Patrick. We, with with that, we collect major clarity data. So in fact, I was looking at it this morning. We have career interest data from all schools, middle and high, to see interest in teaching, education administration, education administration and early childhood. And we can pull that to help target students who may have interest. We can have career development coordinators that do work with them and we do try to promote programs based on that. So yes, we are doing that. Also, Dr. Craftson and I have worked to update the senior survey so that we're able to get some feedback from our seniors as they go through about if they're going to go into education, where they're going to go. And we can use that to help us try to plan accordingly.
And I know one of our, one of our barriers is the financial piece when there there are a lot of students who are who live in underserved communities. And their goal is to transition out of poverty or out out of disadvantages. And we don't want them to work toward getting out and then find themselves still in that same rut and financially. And I know that we've had conversations and we've heard about, you know, funding going to other entities, private schools. And and this, this to me is one of the main reasons why money needs to stay within public schools because we have a lot of young people in our public schools who can be incredible teachers and educators and who will have great relationships. And they need to be able to feel comfortable about their paycheck and and their living arrangements and things like that. So I I would, I would make a suggestion if we could create a survey that has a why not. And that would, I believe, create more conversation on how we can advocate more to get the right students in the classrooms working and serving these children and these families. Because that is very, very important, that the right individuals are in these classrooms working with these kids.
We can work on that. Thank you. Good feedback.
Any other comments or questions?
Great job again, Dr. Craftson. And we're so proud of the high quality of all those that are interested in this endeavor. And and I know that as y'all process through, the best and the brightest will rise to the top.
Thank you.
I do need a motion to send this to the full board for approval.
So move.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, four oh, thank you. An item for discussion would be C T E credential updates.
I'll take this one. So as the board members may be, may remember, every September, we present an accountability update to the board and to the public that highlights school performance grades, accountability ratings, you know, how our students have done on end of grade and it, of course, exams. And one of the areas that we feature is around college readiness. We would talk about advanced placement scores and participation rates. Every year, the the one data set that is missing from that presentation is our credentialing report, which is in our career readiness and C T E departments. The reason that that's missing is because the state doesn't release that report until October or November. And so Mr. Davis is here to share some really awesome data with you all that I I think is is really a testament to the hard work of our C T E teachers, our high school principals and to him and his leadership. As a reminder, if you remember, a year ago, the state superintendent came to U C P S to honor us and celebrate us because at the time, we were the only district in North Carolina to be in the top three of credentialing, credentials earned for three consecutive years. And we're pleased to share some additional data that will continue to support that that celebration, even though it's a year later. So, Mr. Davis, I'll turn it over to you and and I'm not sure if Casey, you're sharing your screen or if he is, but there we go. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Houlihan. I appreciate that. And thank you, board members, for giving me a little bit of time just to celebrate. So I just wanted to start off just making sure everybody was on the same page with understanding the importance of our of our credentials and students earning those credentials. So, of course, credential attainment is going to be something that's really going to help our students show that they've obtained the knowledge and the skills. It's going to help them when they graduate and go into a workplace or into a post-secondary education opportunity. So these actually are a tangible way to validate that knowledge and skills. Also, it's one of those things that if a student has a credential, it can help them when they apply for a job. It's a great resume builder. In some cases, it may even lead to higher starting salaries or raises in current jobs. On top of that, it is an opportunity for us to celebrate our credential attainment for federal accountability. So it's really an important opportunity for Union County Public Schools and our students. So some exciting information for us and just to kind of reiterate what what we've been doing in the district with credentials. So a credential, again, is just a industry-recognized certification. So for the year, for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we had thirteen thousand one hundred and sixty-one credentials earned by students, which, as you can see, is a growth, again, year-over-year for the last four years, beginning in twenty-twenty-one. When we started recording these, we had ninety-two hundred and we have grown over the years to a, to the highest level that we've ever had, which was thirteen thousand one hundred and sixty-one. So really excited about all the work that our teachers have been doing. So really excited about all the work that our teachers have been doing to prepare our students. Uh, to be able to pass and earn these industry certifications. On top of that, I'm really excited about this slide because we're looking here at our attainment rate. So this is the number of students or the percent of students that actually pass a certification who attempted it. So we had a 64% attainment rate. And as you can see, in 2020, 2021, we were at 33.6%. And again, these are industry-recognized credentials. And our teachers are doing a fantastic job in the classrooms, prepping these students and working with them to have them, uh, have opportunities to be successful. And we have, we are up about 90% to 64% this year. So as again, you can see the growth year-over-year in our attainment rate. Again, just a testament to the work that's going on in our classrooms. So some key highlights for our, from the credential report that I think are very relevant for us to, to share today. So Union County Public Schools was again, third in North Carolina in credentials earned by students for the 23, 24 school year. We are the only district that has been in the top three for the last four years. So very proud of that. And again, all the work that goes into those. Uh, we have shown growth in both attainment and credentials earned for the last four years. And on top of that, we were highlighted in the state credential report as high, having the highest credential attainment rate for the Alanco. Veterinary Medical Application Certification, which is a certification that's in our veterinary assisting classes through our animal, through our agriculture programs. And they had an 80% attainment rate there. So uh, very exciting to see that success rate. Some other examples of success that I would like to highlight and. You know, as, as we know, Adobe is a very well-known software, um, and it is something that we have expanded across our district. And we had 494 students earn Adobe Illustrator certification, 564 earn Adobe Photoshop. I really want to highlight our NCCR Electrical Trades. That is a program that's at Monroe High School. And they had 329 NCCR modules there. On the right side, you see the attainment rate for those same certifications. And what you see is on the, in the green, you see UCS and in the blue, you see the state attainment rate. And as you can see in all those, we are substantially higher than the state attainment rate. And again, I want to highlight our NCCR Electrical Trades with an 85% attainment rate for those, at Monroe High School, for those Electrical Trades students. And the teacher in there is actually one of our CTE Teacher of the Year finalists, and he does a fantastic job in there. Other examples of success, we had 565 students earn OSHA 10. And as you know, OSHA is a very well-known certification and that on a resume can really help a student get into a career. So that is definitely a resume builder. Uh, Surf Safe Certification has to do with food handling, uh, making sure that students understand how to handle food safely and appropriately. To ma, to make sure that everything is sanitary. So we had 452 students earn that certification and that is an 83% attainment rate. Again, very excited about that, those numbers. So moving on, uh, next steps, each year we look at our credentials and where we've earned and we look for opportunities to expand. Uh, the state has added a CIW Social Media Strategist Certification and Marketing Courses. We are planning to uh, get teachers prepared to be able to offer that certification in our marketing classes as well. We continue to do that year-over-year and, and if there's any opportunities to add, we will continue to do that. We also will continue to provide support for teachers and that does, that also, that means working with them in the classroom. So that we can help make sure testing goes well and they have the support they need there. But it also means providing professional development for teachers who feel like they need that to be better prepared to certify students. And also with the career plan legislation, it's a great opportunity to make sure we work with our CDCs to encourage students to make sure those credentials. Are added to their career plan and a part of that resume that's in major clarity. So that's a quick update. I do want to just take a minute and thank uh, our teachers for all the work that they do. Also, our CTE Central Office staff, they do a fantastic job supporting our teachers, getting into the classrooms, helping out on testing days. And I have to thank our Technology Services Department because a lot of our systems are software and service-based. And they do a really great job of helping us troubleshoot issues that we've got. So again, it is a team effort to get these results. And I'm willing to take any questions if you have them.
Great job.
Thank you.
Any questions? I, I have a couple. Since CTE is my favorite, sorry, I hate to be biased on this. Um, okay.
You're fine.
Do we have, like, would you say there's, if we're trying to keep growing, do we have any roadblocks to like continually keep growing?
I'll comment, I'll comment.
Go ahead.
So um, this kind of came up in our policy committee meeting as well. Um, there is recent legislation that is scheduled to be implemented in the fall, I believe, Mr. Davis, correct me if I'm wrong. Where the state has added additional graduation requirements. One of them is an art class, beginning with every ninth grader, uh, that is going to become a state graduation requirement. Um, I'm not saying that's not important, but I think when you look at how to implement that, number one, we are lacking the staff to implement that. And number two, that means that there will be classes that children have historically wanted to take that now they cannot take because of scheduling. So this is an item that we will be putting on our legislative uh, agenda that have discussion with our delegation. Uh, because when it comes to implementing, one of my concerns is that it will take away from perhaps a CTE course that could lead to a credential. And so that is one of the concerns that we all have in terms of how do you keep that progress going? Well, when you have a new requirement in that takes a class away from a student, that pathway for CTE is now interrupted. Um, so that is one example. Brian, Casey, you can give others if you have them, but that was the, the one that is most recent that I'm concerned about.
I, I also agree 100% Dr. Hula Hand. That is definitely something that we're watching. Uh, other thing is uh, just making sure that we continue to have good teachers in there who are trained to be able to administer the certifications and train students the right way. And we provide a lot of resources to do that. I think Teach UCS is another great way to get high-quality teachers in the classroom to help us with that.
Um, do you think that we could get an update? You usually give it to us every so often, showing like. Every school and their CTE programs and basically like how many seats they have and then, you know, where they're at enrollment-wise? Cause I know you're probably looking at that constantly. If there's a waitlist, you want to try to make sure that we could maybe open it up, you know, somewhere else. So all students have those opportunities if they have an interest. But if we could just maybe have it sent to the curriculum committee? Just the latest?
Yeah, we can get, I can pull the report, we can generate that and work with you and get you what you need on that.
Okay. Um, and then my last question would be just wondering, like, for example, the Electrical Trades and you were talking about the teacher at Monroe. Do we ever do anything with students that are definitely wanting to go into that path when they graduate to try to help them find jobs? And then track like, you know, the ones that are graduating and already have that job in hand, basically?
So yeah, we do a lot, actually we do a lot of those things. We're constantly working with companies to try to promote. Uh, our programs we had, in fact, I had two conversations this week with the new companies that I mentioned earlier today. Uh, Mr. Kitchen at, at Monroe High School with Electrical Trades, he's, he does a fantastic job. Uh, working with local industry and any, almost any student that wants to go into the career field gets hired. Um, we also have opportunities through our uh, Construction Trades Advisory Board for people to get, have an op, companies to have an opportunity to engage with our teachers, learn about what we do. We invite them into our classrooms, letting them come speak. We've done field trips. We do a lot of things to expose our students to opportunities out there. Cause our goal is for them to come back and fill the gaps that we have in the, in our county if possible.
Brian, you also, Brian, you also have a, I'm sorry, um, a kind of like a signing day? Um, that it's not necessarily an athletic signing day, right? But it's, it's with industry partners where students are, are joining as, as teammates.
Yes. And we ask our All-Star banquet, we'll typically have that first part of May. Um, and that's been, really been successful and industry partners are, they love coming to that meeting, some of those. High-flying uh, students in the construction trades and automotive service and collision repair.
Great. Thank you so much. Any other questions? Nope. Um, okay. It looks like our next meeting is February 26th at 10:00 AM via Zoom and I need a motion to adjourn.
Don't move, Madam Chair.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it. Have a good day.
Great job, everyone.
Stay warm.
Yes, definitely you too.